This is the call to order. For our Dun Ellen City Council meeting, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. It is now five forty P M. Would y'all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would y'all please remain standing? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to say a prayer? Tom, thank you.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. We thank you, Lord, that we can gather here once again as those in this official capacity of authority for the city and those of us, Lord, and not so much of official capacity. Father, together, I pray in Jesus' name that we can work for the good of this community. I pray a blessing over this council, Lord, that you would knit their hearts together to be in one accord. I pray, I pray for unity. And I pray, Lord, that they seek you for an increase in knowledge, wisdom, and discernment for the things of this city. We thank you for what you're already doing, Lord, and we pray for more. We pray for more in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, everybody be seated. Ms. Odom, we're ready for a roll call.
Mayor White.
President.
Vice Mayor Henshaw.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Covage.
Listen.
Troy Slattery, public works manager.
Here.
Jan Smith, Sonnet's Department.
Here.
Michelle Leonard, Assistant Clerk. Chief McQuaid. He's here. Lieutenant Yaw. Andrew Hand, City Attorney.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Thursday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, very good. Counsel, is there anyone on counsel that has any comments on the agenda before we get started? Anything about the agenda you would like to make a comment on?
Yes, sir.
All right, now we go to public comments. What this is, is a an opportunity for the public to speak. Couple of things I want to go over with you. She'll have three minutes to speak. Please sign up in the back there if you'd like to speak. Those that sign up can speak first. We will allow and recognize anyone to speak after the signups get done. We have three minutes, like I said, at this time, please turn off any device that might beep or ring or something like that. When you come up to speak, please give your name and address.
Yeah.
Speak directly into the microphone, especially if you have a mask on. These meetings are recorded and there are people listening to them on Zoom. So what this is an opportunity right here, if you, if you choose to speak right now, this is an opportunity to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. Any, anything you want to talk about that's not on the agenda. If it is on the agenda, then you will be required to wait till that agenda item comes up and then you can speak to it at that time. So this is an opportunity to speak about anything new, anything different, something you want to bring to our attention. Introduce yourself, anything like that. So, Ms. Odom, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Mr. and Ms. Koger both have signed up to speak. Okay, Shelley Moore.
Welcome, Ms. Moore.
Thank you. My name is Shelley Moore. I reside at one nine two zero three St. Lawrence Drive here in Dun Ellen. I am a third generation resident of the city of Dun Ellen as well as Marion County and Citrus County. I work as an admissions registered nurse for Vitas Healthcare. We are hospice of the nature coast. I would like to invite my Regional Director of Marketing, Mike Scott and Danny Vieira to speak.
Good evening. How are you doing today?
Good evening.
And you're gonna have to give your name and.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michael Smith. I'm a resident of St. John's County, Florida. One four eight Abbott's Way, St. Augustine, Florida, three two zero nine five. What has happened, to give you guys a little background, is the state of Florida has opened up the Certificate of Need for a new hospice provider to be in Marion County. Vitas Healthcare, we're over forty years in the state of Florida as a hospice provider. So we are looking into bringing our services here to Marion County, specifically, obviously, here in Dun Ellen as well. That will really give the city, we obviously will put an office here in Dun Ellen as well as hire, you know, home health aides, nurses as well. We do it a little bit different than others. We're a large organization. We're in fourteen states plus the District of Columbia. Right now on service, we have about nineteen thousand patients on service on an average day. So we are probably, we are the largest hospice provider in the country, a single source. So really, we wanted to come and really tell you a little bit about us, but also I'm in town really to find out more about Dun Ellen and what the needs are here in this, in this city. Because what we have found throughout Florida, when we come in and we, we want to be part of the community. We want to be part of the fabric of the community and find out what your needs are. That way, we can address those in our application to the state. And the biggest thing that we also do is education. We are very a proponent of educating the community on what hospice is, because a lot of folks don't know. They think hospice is a place. Hospice is actually, you're right, as a Medicare recipient, that you receive the care under, under the hospice services. So that's one of the things we really do is educate the community on that. But it's really all I've got.
I have thirty seconds if I can count. All right. My name is Danny Vieira, reside at eleven forty-five Blue Bonnet Terrace in Inverness. I'm a citizen of Citrus. So just to give you some quick numbers, that's the wise important, if you're like a two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty of a population American of three hundred and sixty thousand with mortality rate about five thousand and three hundred. Both hospices are only capturing less than one percent, about five hundred, which means in a room of twenty-three, only two of you will be offered this services. So everyone deserves the dignity to die without paying, and that's why we're here. I don't know if I have further more, but.
So maybe counsel might have a question or two for you.
Yes.
You're, you're here as a, an entity that would, is considering coming into Dun Ellen and offering your services with hospice, right? What, what do you need from the city? Are you just introducing yourself and you're already are planning to do it? Do you need something from the city? Do you need approval? Do you need a, some guidance? What, what is, what is your purpose of making?
Our purpose really is to, you know, meet with each individually. I would love to have that opportunity to get individually so I can understand the needs of Dun Ellen. And also gather your support for somebody, I know us as Vitas Healthcare to be the provider of hospice. Because how it works in the state of Florida is that it's an application you put into the state of Florida and then you are awarded it through AHA. So that, that's why we're here is really, I need to understand more of what your needs are. That way, I can put that in our application, which will again enhance the city of Dun Ellen. Kind of similar to what we've done in Panama City last year. When we opened up in Panama City. There was a huge homeless population there along with a food need. So we donated a hundred and forty thousand towards the food bank. So that's the type of things I need to understand about Dun Ellen. Is there something that we can do as a, as a hospice organization, but also as a, as a, as a partner here in Dun Ellen? So that's kind of why I'm here.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any suggestions how we could possibly meet with them, whether it's individually or presentation or whatever? Any, Ms. Kenny?
Well, I welcome you for sure. There is a need in this. And I would enjoy meeting with you personally. I don't know about others, but I would very much like to talk to you and find out exactly what you are thinking and express some of the things that I think we may need in our community.
Happy to think.
Thank you.
Ms. Way.
Good evening. My thought is that you guys come back and do a presentation, maybe bring some brochures or something and have the public, give back to the public.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you brought back a memory to me. My mom died in a hospice house, so. Yeah, it was several years ago, but every time I hear the word hospice, I think about it, so. But that, that was my thought.
Ms. Covage?
Yeah, I'd like to, thank you very much for coming here this evening too. And also, I think a lot of people don't understand that hospice means in-home care also and that I'm referring also to the fact that my first husband died of leukemia and died in her home as he wished to here in Marion County. And I definitely would love to have you come back or meet with you as an individual, whichever works out best for you. Also, I'm interested, are you thinking of a site here to build or how is?
No, more of an office. So we have, we have our staff here.
Okay.
Every week you have to do in this company.
Right.
Kind of similar to what we do in other areas of the state. Now, we're actually, as you just stated very eloquently, we, we do continuous care in the home. So we pride ourselves in taking care of folks where they want to be and naturally in the home. We're not a big proponent of building inpatient units or houses. We really believe that folks, we want to, you know, give them where they want to be. If they want to be at home, we're gonna make sure that they stay.
Vice Mayor?
And I can say that I've, you know, my uncle back, got nineteen eighty two eighty-three, he had hospice, and that was probably the first time I'd ever been around that. And my grandmother used hospice and I've had many family members and my best friend. So having y'all here would be, I'm sure, a blessing for so many. And if, you know, you say you don't know, that a lot of us don't know who you are, but I, I beg to differ with you on that because y'all are angels and you've touched many, many lives for the better. So thank you on that. And yes, if, you know, if our attorney says we're allowed to speak with you privately, that's fine. Of course, we'd have to, you know, if we ever had to vote for anything, we'd have to make note of anything that we kind of discussed and of course, Mr. Hand can tell you better than that. But happy to speak with you one-on-one if it's allowed or again in an open forum where we can have a few more minutes than just, you know, three. But you did a great job. Did you graduate from Citrus?
No, I should have just relocated here, but I visit a lot. I feel like I've already been here for years.
I'm just an alum from Citrus, so just wondering.
All right, aim on.
Right, Mr. Hand, is, is there any issues with individually, separately, and not interacting with each other? Any counsel person meeting with these, this group and getting some more information?
No, not at this time. There's not a pending quasi- judicial application active. And so in the absence of any upcoming applications, even though there may be an express of possible interest and, you know, some sort of office or something in the city at a future time, because there's no pending application, there's not.
So Ms. Odom, Mandy?
Yes, sir.
What, what I might suggest is there seems to be universal interest in the counsel of thus possibly reach out, find a day where they can come. And then you can schedule individual appointments with any counsel person that would like to meet with them individually. So that might give you an opportunity. Because of sunshine laws outside of the meetings, you guys probably don't.
Yeah.
We can't meet with you in groups, but we can meet you individually. So let's say you were gonna come on a Wednesday and be here from one to three. Well, maybe there might be two or three councilmen that say, okay, give me a time slot and I could come in and talk. Thank you very much, and we hope to hear from you soon.
May I have some counsel information?
Yes, I think.
You know.
Thank y'all.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore.
Thank you. Ms. Odom, anyone else signed up?
Did you want to speak on a non-agenda item or just on the budget? A non-agenda item?
So.
Because she signed up on the budget worksheet.
So.
Mary Ann Hilton, one two zero seven eight, coming to port to Dylan, Florida. I am here today to say thank you to Troy and to Matt because they're two gentlemen that went way beyond what should have been required of them to help my husband and myself. We had some nice guy come down in a very large truck, knock a tree branch about this big round off the tree out in front. And then, you know, I'm in my eighties and my husband's older than I am. He and Matt saw what happened, came over, made sure everything was cleaned up and safe and were kind and considerate as they always are. And I am very grateful and I want all the people in this city to know how fortunate we are to have people like Troy and Matt here because they are literally lifesavers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Odom, anyone else signed up?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Yes.
David Coger, one one nine eight three Palmetto Way here in Dun Ellen. Troy, did you have any success with the county regarding the fence across the?
You'll have to ask the counsel, direct the question to the counsel.
Did, did the council have, does the council know of any success with getting the county to participate in putting the fence across the bio-retention area adjacent to our house?
Speaking for myself, Dave, I am certainly aware of this. It's been brought up many times, but I am not aware of anything ongoing that's directed to rectify it. Nothing has been brought to my attention recently.
Has anybody made any phone calls to the county?
That would be within the purview of staff to be doing that. Troy, maybe you can speak to that.
Yeah, I believe we started this conversation with the county over a year ago about the fence along the bridge and the chain link fence then around the D R A. It was supposed to be one project for both fence lines. However, they did the, the bridge work. And when I contacted the county, I was told it was going to be budgeted at a later date to put the chain link up. And then recently, Ms. Kroger handed me some email correspondence from the county to him where it clearly describes it as a city problem and they apparently were not going to do that chain link. But I have not heard that directly from the county that's in correspondence with Mr. Kroger. So if counsel wants, I'll reach out to the county and see where we're at with it. But I was under the impression it would be a budgeted item for this coming year.
Questioned becomes, is it budgeted?
I don't know. I haven't heard from the county.
Maybe you can make a jump call this week and.
Yes, ma'am. If, if that's what the council wishes, I'll make sure I reach out to the county and see if they've actually continued with this project or if they just dropped it and said they're not gonna do it without notifying us. So.
Ms. Odom, could you, so this just doesn't get left in the, in the shuffle? Could you put this on our next workshop for discussion? Just make sure we're following up on this.
Yes, and I, I believe I do, I'm aware of what email Troy is talking about because I got copied on that same email where Jim Coolard is stating that that's private property.
And in response to that, the, the city council might respond to Jim Coolard and remind Jim that, that bio-retention area is a bio-retention area for the county's drainage system. So that is their permit that, that did that. And like, since the County Road forty-four is a county road, you've got to get the fence from the existing fence on the bridge, off the bridge and to the backside of the sidewalk. After that, I have volunteered to pay for the fence. That still stands. But if you can get the county to get the fence tied into the existing wing, off the end of the bridge to the backside of the sidewalk, I'll pay for the fence. From there, it's my property.
Right, thank you.
Do you want to put it on the workshop for that December?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, October. Don't confuse me.
I think the subject has been brought up on several occasions and it looks like no one's wanting to accept ownership to resolve it. So let's put some time into it and do what we can to to get, get people to stop doing what they're doing and address this. So we'll be on the next workshop. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak on any non-agenda item? Okay. Oh, wow. All right, come on up. Name an address.
Yeah, Art Jones, one two one six three Palmetto Way, Dun Ellen here. Just wanted to say a couple of things to counsel. Because I know last time I was here, you had a big discussion about the police department and things like that. And listening to other people, what they had to say, I wanted to ask the counsel to think about it. Is it possible for the police department to share this building with, at City Hall with the rest of the people here? Because this is a nice, modern building and then you could still keep the old building for whatever storage or other needs you have. So I just wanted to put that out there that maybe we don't need a new building for them. We already have this beautiful building here and, you know, look at the possibility of sharing it with them, sharing it with the police department. Because a lot of times, there's not a lot going on here, a lot of room, big parking lot. So it's just something to think about. And one of the reasons I'm interested in it is because and I, I think most people on city council would agree, we want to have a very efficient, cost-effective police force here that doesn't bankrupt the city or doesn't use all the money up while the roads fall apart. Down where I live on Palmetto Way, the roads and the drainage system is just falling apart. We need to find some money to fix that. When we have heavy rains, the river gets all muddy and gray, full of water, I mean, stuff's just going down. And I've seen Troy down there many times and the culverts have been smashed by trucks cutting the corners. They're very narrow roads and it's just really is falling apart. The culverts are rusting out and things. So I'm thinking that, you know, maybe, you know, instead of, we had budgeted all that money for a new building and renovating it, maybe some of that should go into infrastructure. I know the police department just got some nice new cars. We see these nice new cars running around. Now they're gonna get destroyed on the roads. You know, these, there's some huge potholes on Mabel Avenue and stuff there. And, you know, that's, that's, I think, is an important thing that we all work together for that. Because the river is absolutely beautiful. We're getting a lot of extra silt in there because of the drainage systems aren't working. I would like to see the hydrilla removed. We, we've been very successful down in Crystal River with the dredging project we did down there and planting eel grass. As I go up and down the Rainbow River, I can see some spots of really, really bad hydrilla in the river. And I've got a lead on a dredging company that I wanted to bounce it off counsel. See if you'd be interested in maybe getting a quote from them that we could present to the state and maybe get some state funding like we got for Crystal River. And now for the Homosassa River to do some, some sort of a dredging and replanting of eel grass project. So that's my three minutes today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Art. Would anyone else like to speak on a non-agenda, non-agenda items? Okay, please note, everyone has had their opportunity to speak. Now we go to the next thing, which is the consent agenda. Consent agenda today includes the first eight things on the agenda. These are things at the workshop that counsel has already discussed. And it's already had a consensus that we are willing to approve these without any further discussion. So at this time, it is your opportunity to make comment on items one through eight. Items would be the minutes, the hiring of a a person for our community development manager, appointment for a person on our pension board, an appointment of a person to be on our city planning commission to exercise lease agreements, authorize staff to change the management plan to allow fishing in the interior pond. Authorize staff to start the bidding on the reconstruction and the paving of Cedar Street and Ohio Street. And authorize number eight, the mayor to again, sign something that allows some money to come into the city. So at this time, one through eight, does anyone want to make a comment on any of those? Yes.
Again, David Coger, one one nine eight three Palmetto Way. Regarding item number six, I was at the workshop last week. And in that workshop, I requested that they amend the proposed swimming time at the Blue Run Park from six o'clock to dusk, to amend that to six o'clock to sunset. Reminding everybody that during the June, July, and August, dusk goes to nine thirty, ten o'clock. And I think that's a little excessive. Dust is defined as when it gets totally dark. And I don't think it's safe for people to be in the river's boats, traveling up and down the river that have been upriver all day, coming home at night. I think it'd be best to, to change that from, from six P M. till sunset.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to make a comment on item one through eight? Yes.
Paula Coger at one one nine eight three Palmetto Way. My, I want to follow up and say again that I think the big issue here is how is any new rule gonna be enforced? As a person who lives right across, across from Blue Run, I don't want to be the person who has to call the cops every time I see somebody out there. Because one thing, they're busy and they have a lot to do. And I don't want to be distracting them from more important things. But if we don't have a way to enforce that, whatever is decided, it's useless. And I just want to have a way to keep people out of the river in excess by not having to totally always bother our dear policemen. And they always come and they're always very polite, but I don't like to have to do that. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, please make note that the public has had its opportunity to speak to the consent agenda. Can we have a motion by counsel to approve?
So moved.
Consent agenda, we have a second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes unanimously. Okay, now we go to our regular agenda. This time, Ms. Odom, do you need to make a public statement?
All persons wishing to address the city council will be asked to limit their comments to the specific subject being addressed. Public opinions and input are valued by the council. However, it is requested that comments are directed at civic issues rather than personal comments directed toward the council members or staff in order to foster mutual respect between council members and the public. Members of the public in attendance at public forums should listen courteously and attentively to all public discussions before the body and focus on the business at hand. They shall refrain from interrupting other speakers, making personal comments not germane to the business of the body or otherwise interfering with the orderly conduct of meetings. Members of the public addressing city council and boards or commissions on a specific project or proposal are requested to disclose any personal interest or relationship and any business, professional, or financial interest with any individual, group, project, or proposal regarding the subject matter under review. Members of the public should always err on the side of more public disclosure, not less, in order to provide integrity to the public process.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number nine. This is a public hearing on the tentative proposed millage rate and tentative budget for the city of Dun Ellen for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget year. and tentative budget for the city of Dunellen for the 2021-2022 budget year. The tentative millage rate for the city of Dunellen is 6.5, which is 3.8% greater than the rollback rate.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, 18%, 3.18.
3.18, okay. Rollback rate of 6.2995. The tentative budget proposed is $4,152,556. It is now 6:10 PM. And I open the public hearing for staff to first make a presentation and then to anyone wishing to address the city council on either the proposed millage rate or the 2021-2022 budget. And the first to speak to this will be our finance director, Ms. Jan Smith. Excuse me, sir. Yes, we did. It was unanimous, yes. Yes, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Honorable mayor, city council, and members of residents of Dunellen and surrounding areas, welcome to our first budget hearing for the fiscal year 2022 budget. Pursuant to Part 1 of Section 20 of our city charter, the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 is submitted for review and adoption by city council. We have two documents that are associated with the budget. We prepare a budget summary that provides a line item review of multiple prior fiscal years, actuals for our current fiscal year 2021 budget, and actuals as of June 30, as well as projected year end. It is documents designed to provide the reader an opportunity to make a comparison between 2021 and fiscal year 2122. The second document is a detail of all the line items and the individual items that are budgeted. And the two documents combined represent the city's plan for the upcoming fiscal year. First, I'm going to go over our current year budget highlights for both general fund and TIF. And then I'll move into the proposed budget. For general fund, transfers in are projected to come in under budget, primarily due to capital projects that are moving forward to the new fiscal year. These projects total approximately $1 million. It includes the repaving of Ohio and Cedar Street, the construction rehabilitation of a police facility, the continuation of a stormwater asset mapping project in conjunction with SWIFTMUD that the city is responsible for 50% of, and replacement of city hall carpet and flooring. Revenue is projected to come in over budget primarily due to taxes that are estimated to come in at about $185,000 greater than budget. This is primarily due to the 1% discretionary sales surtax that was re-adopted for an additional four years. We did not budget the entire four years because at the time, we didn't know if it would be re-approved. And the second is building permit revenue is projected to come in greater than budget as well. Expenses are projected to be, to come in about $1 million under budget. And that's primarily due to these capital projects that are moving forward to the next fiscal year. So the net effect to the general fund, we anticipate a year-end surplus of about $271,000. And of course, that's subject to our year-end audit. The surplus, again, is attributed to the discretionary sales surtax. Reserve money that is per our, the city's fund balance policy that will be transferred to reserves at the end of year. Almost $13,000 will go into capital funds. And then about $70,000 just to go into unrestricted reserve unless directed otherwise by council. And the net effect is a result of staff managing the general fund budget for six consecutive years without needing to draw from reserves for operating costs. As of June 30, the general fund cash on hand is approximately $5.6 million. The funds are allocated amongst various reserves with restrictions as to how and when they are used either by council or state statute. General fund accomplishments for this current year. We've had water and sewer, water, sewer, and road resurfacing improvements. We've had construction of a 33-space parking lot at Short Tower Way. We have fulfilled goal number three for the economic development strategy to promote entrepreneurship by providing a venue for the CEP Fast Track program. We've managed a net savings of about $22,000 due to departmental and staff restructuring. And other capital needs that were addressed, a city beach shade shelter, three patrol vehicles, which were 75% grant-funded through USDA, increased police presence on the Rainbow River, and completed our first full year of compliance with our fund balancing, fund balance policy. And as a result of COVID, city staff implemented multiple options for the public to participate in city meetings, either in person, remotely through Zoom, the Zoom webinar platform, or to view it on the city YouTube channel. Moving on to the tax increment financing district, which is better known as CRA. Expenses, there was a construction of a 73-space parking lot at Ernie Mills Park with resurfacing the basketball court and construction of a pickleball court, which I don't know if that tournament, the pickleball tournament has taken place yet or not. We've reserved funding set aside for grants to residential and comparsial property owners in the amount of $70,000. However, to date, we've only received $2,800 in applications and disbursements. So hopefully, in the next year, we'll be able to generate some more interest with revising the grant policy. On February 11th, back in 2019, council moved forward to authorize Marion County to commence with the Blue Run of Dunellen Park restroom project. And we have been carrying $12,000 in our budget since then. Originally, $30,000 was allocated and we have contributed $18,000 to the design of those restrooms so far. And the 125 Anniversary Park is still a listed project and we're still looking at approximately $47,000 to move forward into the new fiscal year. We have our bike path that is still planned along East Pennsylvania County Road 44. The CRA board committed $350,000 over seven years. To date, we have set aside $303,760. With the balance, we'll be setting aside next, with this next year. And so our commitment will be fully funded at that point. Moving on to the new budget for next year, fiscal year 2122. This will be the fifth year that we have successfully held the millage rate at 6.5 mils after reducing it from 7.5. The 6.5 millage rate is 3.18% greater than the rollback rate of 6.2995 mils. Property values have generally increased approximately 4% citywide. And as a result, the city will realize an additional ad valorem proceeds of approximately $59,000. And over this current fiscal year 2021. The proposed millage rate for the certification of taxable value was approved in July at seven mils. This was allowed to, this was approved to allow staff to prepare a budget that we could bring back, keeping the millage rate the same. But in case we needed a little bit of extra money, we could, we could move up to seven mils. But we had no intention of coming before council with that, that proposal. We held workshops July 7th, the 21st, August 18th, and September 1st. And this is the first of our two statutory public hearings. Our second public hearing will be held September 27th at 5:30 PM. For the general fund, for the next year's budget, the budget is set at $4,152,556. And the following percentages make up that budget. Personnel expenses, 34.2%. Operating expenses, 24%. Grants, 0.1%. Capital expenses, 37.1%. And debt service of 4.2%. Point 4% or $15,642 will be retained at the end of the year and deposited into the capital reserve in compliance with the city's fund balance policy. Expenses have increased over fiscal year 2021 by approximately $41,000, primarily due to the new contractual obligation with Marion County for call-taking and 911. Staff and city council are both committed to continue the pursuit of additional revenue opportunities and reducing expenses in an effort to enhance the general fund. Moving on to the tax increment financing district, the proposed TIF budget is $624,714, which is a 16% decrease over the current budget year. This is primarily due to a decrease in funding from reserves for the capital projects. The TIF budget consists of personnel expenses making up 7.3%. Operating expenses, 9.5%. Capital expenses, 67.2%. And grants and aid, 16.1%. The capital projects funded in the TIF budget or CRA, the restroom facility at Blue Run Park, West Pennsylvania Avenue Streetscape Phase 2. Now, this is a continuation of Phase 1 of the project, which began in fiscal year 1819 when the irrigation system was installed. Landscaping and park benches were installed, purchased, and installed in fiscal year 2021, our current fiscal year. And so the streetscape continues and it's going to entertain the concept of intersection upgrades to US 41 and County Road 484, gateway infrastructure, and stamped brick concrete. There's also historic gateway signs as a capital project, continued Ernie Mills beautification, the 125 Anniversary Park, wayfinding signage, which is another goal of the economic development strategy, and a plan for vacant or underutilized buildings to analyze that. That is also another one of the economic development strategy goals. So this is in an effort to show that a, a plan is not just sitting on a shelf, that we're actually going to move forward with it. Other highlights, there are many. I'm going to go over some of the primary ones. And a part-time officer is moving to full-time. There is one new Public Works service worker. As I mentioned before, the contracted 911 call-taking with Marion County, contracted information technology support, Public Works vehicle replacement, that's going to be funded by the 1% discretionary sales tax. And that's budgeted at $170,000. This is the third year of successfully funding a council contingency for unanticipated expenses. We have $40,824 in that line item. There's an employee performance-based merit program for the, I believe it's third year in a row. And this is our second year of compliance with the fund balance policy to help build up our capital reserves. So in conclusion, staff has successfully acclimated to the operating adjustments and workload shift caused by personnel and departmental restructuring that has taken place over this current year. And council's participation, guidance, and overall support of staff is greatly appreciated. This concludes my presentation and I welcome any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Hats off to you guys. I appreciate it.
It's definitely a journey.
I understand everything, but it seems to be a lot of work. And you guys tend to keep it with it. Hats off to you.
Ms. Kenny?
I concur.
Thank you.
Job well done. We thank you and certainly appreciate you and hope you stay around for a while.
This has been a team effort. If it wasn't for the department heads all coming together and negotiating successfully when I've said there's too much in there, we've got to do something about it. It's, it's, this was a very successful year for us, I think, in my opinion.
Together, everyone achieves more. Team. I remember that from my job.
Hi, Smear.
Again, going through budgets that I've gone through through various years. Again, y'all have all done an excellent job. Me, congratulations. This being your first full-pledged budget. Y'all have done a great job, you know. Always would love to lower the millage rate, but when you look at the difference of what the millage rate would be if we went down to 6.29, you know, there's just, you know, there's not that much wiggle room. So I know it's hard because we all up here pay the taxes as well. So thank you for spending my money wisely. And there's no greatest.
And Jan, I would just like to say very briefly, you put, you put in a lot of work to come up with this packet that's 100 pages. But what I really, really appreciate is actually your summaries, where you break down 100 pages into two, right? And if I focus on the two, I kind of have a pretty good idea of what the other 98 pages are about. So I very much appreciate that.
Summary is helpful.
Okay, very good.
Mayor, I would also like to thank Jan because this has not been an easy effort for me. This being the first year that I've had to be responsible for this and I could not have done it without her. There's no way.
That's correct. You know, staff has, there's been a lot of responsibilities shifted around over the last six months and I think staff has, has not missed a beat, to tell you the truth.
I just love it when you give credit to where credit is due.
You mean, she deserves it.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Okay, now we come back to the public. I will now call on members of the public wishing to address the city council on either the proposed millage rate or any, any part of the budget. Here's your opportunity to make a comment to council about either the millage rate that is being proposed or anything that's in the budget.
I have two people signed up, Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. and Mrs. Coger. You're done?
Anyone else? Ms. Odom, no one else? Okay.
Let me just double check Jan real quick.
All right.
Nope.
No one else wants to speak? All right, please note that everyone has had their opportunity to speak to the budget. It is now 6:27 PM. And I open the public hearing for staff to first make a presentation. Whoop. Nope. It is now 6:27. And I close the public hearing held to discuss the proposed millage rate and the 2021-2022 budget. Okay, now we are going to agenda item number 10, if you're following it. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment on agenda item number 10? Okay, no comment? Resolution number RES 2021-11. Is there a motion to read resolution RES 2021-11 into the record? I need a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, unanimous. Is there a motion to adopt resolution?
We have to read it.
Okay, read it, please. Thank you.
Resolution number RES 2021-11, City of Dunellen. A resolution tentatively setting the tax millage for the year 2021. Whereas the city council for the city of Dunellen met on September 13th, 2021 at 5:30 PM at City Hall, 20750 River Drive, Dunellen, Florida 34431, to consider the tentative amount of the tax millage to be collected on all real, personal property in the city of Dunellen, Florida for the year 2021. And whereas, the city council has determined the tentative millage on all real and personal properties in the city of Dunellen shall be set at 6.5 mils, which is 3.18% greater than the rollback rate of 6.2995 mils. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council for the city of Dunellen, Florida, that the tax millage on all real and personal properties in the city of Dunellen for the year 2021 year twenty twenty-one is tentatively set at six point five mils, duly adopted by the city council at a regular meeting held on the thirteenth day of September twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion now to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven, setting the tentative mileage rate at six point five for the year twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two? Do we have a motion?
No.
We have a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. For the record, the tentative mileage rate adopted by the city council is three point one eight percent greater than the rollback rate of six point two nine nine five. We now go to agenda item number eleven. Is there anyone who would like to make comment on agenda item number eleven? Please note, there was no comment by the public. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve. Is there a motion to read resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve into the record? We need a motion.
No.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimously. Ms. Odom, please read.
Resolution number RES twenty twenty-one dash twelve, a resolution adopting the tentative budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, whereas the city council for the City of Danellin met on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at five-thirty P.M. at City Hall, two zero seven five zero River Drive, Danellin, Florida, three four four three one, to consider the adoption of a tentative budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and whereas the city council for the City of Danellin has determined that the budget will be four million one hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars for the City of Danellin. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council for the City of Danellin, Florida, that the budget for the City of Danellin has been tentatively set for four million one hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars, duly adopted at the city council, by the city council at a regular meeting held on the thirteenth day of September twenty twenty-one.
Okay, for the record, is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve, setting the tentative general fund budget in the amount of four million one hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars for the City of Danellin as proposed for the twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two fiscal year? I need a motion.
No.
We have a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Go to agenda item number twelve. Is there any public comment on agenda item number twelve? No public comment. So this is the tax increment financing district budget. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative tax increment financing district budget in the amount of six hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars?
No.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we now, for you that are following us closely, we are now on item number thirteen. This is council discussion of the modular building. Just comment, and then we'll turn it over to council for discussion. The concept of the modular building is a concept on going forward with, I think, the unanimous feeling of council that we want to do something to greatly improve the current police station. I think it is unanimous that everyone knows the police station and its current state is inadequate and something that needs to be addressed. Councilwoman Covitch has forwarded the concept of the modular building. We've had actually a couple presentations on it. It seems like it's viable. The strength of it seems to be that the building can be built at less of an expense of what it would cost to build a brick and mortar building. The incredible and exciting part of it is how quickly it can be done, seemingly could be done in just trying to be, you know, fair, eight to ten months, you can have a building completed compared to trying to build a building from scratch, which I'm sure a building like this would take a couple years. Or to retrofit a building would certainly take a couple years, especially got to keep in consideration the delays in construction, workers, the difficulty of getting materials. The key component of the modular building is, number one, there appears to be a significant cost savings to do that, and more so than anything, how rapid it can be completed. I think the last thing this council would want to be wrestling with is having a half-completed police building a year and a half from now, trying to explain why it isn't completed and why we're waiting on this and why we're waiting on that and this sort of thing. Think that would be a nightmare if we got bogged down into something like that. So we have heard a couple presentations. If we want to go the modular route, or actually if we want to go the new building route, you have to think of where you'd want to build it. Are there some buildings out there that, some lots that are vacant that you could build on? Are there some buildings out there that are vacated or empty that could be taken down and you can put something there? So this is just, the council has not decided on a modular building. The only thing we have decided on with a vote is selling the Soul Harbor Church property. So now we're looking, okay, where do we go from here? So Ms. Covitch, since you were the one that really brought this to council's attention, why don't you lead it off and tell us what you would, say what you'd like to say?
Yeah, perhaps we can discuss this at our October meeting also, but what I would like to, if we could just imagine a flowchart of money, okay? Because obviously, we have to pay for this police station, we have to pay for a site, okay? And my contention is that we can come up with the funding from the sales of, from the sale of the Souls Harbor Church, and also grants, where the complete package of the police station on a site would cost the city not a whole lot of money, okay? And here's how, I'd like to actually construct the flowchart and present it at our next meeting, but here's how I would see it might look like, okay? We have within the police department budget over three hundred thirty thousand dollars. That would pay for a lot. There is a lot available for sale on William Street. Right now, it's point nine four acres, I believe. Water and power is right there, ready to set up. Okay, so take the money of the police budget, that would secure the property, and it's offered for sale right now for less than three hundred thousand. The city could negotiate, I'm sure. Okay, that gives us the property. Sell the Souls Harbor Church, and that tentatively would pay for site prep with a lot of money left over. The modular building is going to be of a reasonable, sensible purchase price that a grant could be filed through the same grant offering before USDA rural community assistance. And when you present a grant that's four hundred thousand or less to them, you get greater consideration, and perhaps that would pay for the modular building. So there is a flowchart of money where I would say the expediency of getting that police station set up, ready, moved into and operating really depends on the sale of the Souls Harbor Church at this time. That's it.
Okay, very good. Ms. Kenny?
Well, I do think that we have a lot on our plate, but it is important for the public to know, I think, and for the police to know, that we have heard their need, and we want to see that they have something that they are going to be happy with and something they will be proud of, and that will be a positive for our men in blue. How exactly we get there, I am not sure. We're going to have to do a lot of the research that Ms. Councilwoman Covitch has already laid out, and I look forward to the process, and I hope it will be a speedy one.
Ms. Williams?
Let me see, what should I say? Hopefully, it won't take another two or three years with the police department living with the roaches and the snakes and stuff before they get into a building. So hopefully, the Souls Harbor Church will be sold quickly.
Oh, okay. I was waiting for your final.
That was it for me.
Vice Mayor?
It's been in there almost a year now with the roaches, longer than that, so good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Just, you know, it's great that, you know, it's great that there are other options out there that, you know, Ms. Covitch brought to us, you know, it's always nice to be taught something. However, when we are dealing with our budgets and with all of our funds, not a whole lot of money is not a viable answer to give to our citizens. Before we decide to sell buildings that are quite easily able to be completed, probably within a remodel of, I would estimate, and again, I kind of do this for a living, even in the bad market, up to six months, maybe eight months, we would have our place in a building already, especially if we had done what we were supposed to do back, starting in October or November, December. So we haven't taken the money out of our budget that we were proposing for the renovation, just to make sure everybody's aware of that. But to have these words of not a whole lot of money, less of an expense, quickly, and not have anything that's concrete, and to spend just under three hundred thousand, two hundred thousand on a vacant piece of land, when we already have the property, it's three hundred and thirty-five thousand that we paid for it, doing an additional four or five hundred thousand, I don't see where we're going to, less of an expense or not a whole lot of money be spent. And again, selling something quick as a city, well, those words just don't go together, sadly, because of governmental restrictions. So for any of us to sit here and think that we can sell the building within thirty days or sixty days is probably going to be a hard push, because somebody's going to want to do their due diligence of at least fifteen to thirty days themselves, once their bid has been accepted. At least I would, if I was purchasing a property. So again, I just don't think, until we have a idea, again, this is just putting the cart before the horse. We don't know where we can put them, we don't know what size we need, we don't know what types of specialty police windows and walls and flooring that we will need at this police department if we were to use a modular building. I just can't see how it's a thought at this time without having details and exact numbers and not a whole lot of money. Just, it bothers me. So I don't feel like that would be doing the right thing for the citizens of Danellin, not just because it went to be at the Souls Harbor, actually the Ohio Street property, but that just to me is not a, it's not doing our due diligence before we get rid of the baby in the bathwater, so to speak.
I just want to make a comment. It's been said a couple times this evening that this is what we did or should have done, or this is the way it's supposed to be. Just want to be reminded that the composition of this council is now radically different than it was seven, eight months ago, when the council voted to go forward. This council has the right, as a newly-elected council, to either go forward with that or to reverse it. So what the council has done is legal, it's lawful, it's due process, it's been done in the open, it's been fully discussed, there's nothing going on, and this is what this new council wants to do. So a statement of that's what we were supposed to do, or that's what we got to do, or anything like that.
My word was, that's what we should have done.
Okay, so we, that other council, and maybe you said we should have done it, this council was saying, no, we shouldn't do this. So right now, the law stands that we shouldn't do it. You might disagree with it, but that's what this council has decided. Okay, what we're trying to do is actually do what the vice mayor is suggesting. We are trying to come up with the facts. This is nothing more than discussion. Maybe we're going to do this, maybe we're not. So no one's deciding anything right now. The modular building is right now a concept. Maybe when we get all of our pricing together, we'll find we can't do that either, maybe there'll be another way. So what we're doing right now is we are working with the modular builder. I think Chief has given him an idea, what kind of size of a building that he would need and the parameters, and the builder is giving us just a base idea what it would cost to do the building. I believe, if you haven't received it already, I believe the builder, the modular builder, is sending council a perspective of what he believes it would cost, based on the general ideas that the chief has shared with him. So we will at least, probably when we get home, Mandy, have we already received that?
Yes.
We have received that, right?
I did forward it to all of you this afternoon.
All right, so it's there. The other, the other part of it is, okay, if we do do that, where would we build it? Where would it be? So, so Mandy, do you have my slides ready? What we're doing right now, Troy has really been doing this, and Chief has been too, looking around, looking for possible sites to build. And one of the, one of the sites that pops up in big terms is a, there's two lots for sale that are clear, right on Powell Street in Illinois, where there's two lots side by side that they're both for sale, and that's where it was. Now that is the road, I believe, that takes you?
Two forty-one.
Two forty-one.
That's Bank of America up to the townhouse.
Right, okay. There is the two lots sitting right there. The two lots, they're, each lot is point seven five acres, put them, they're both for sale. If you put them both together, you have nearly an acre and a half. And it's my understanding that they can be bought for a, together, for a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
That's a deal.
It's cleared, no building to tear down, high, dry, perfect, right on Powell Road, right on the edge of the historic section, easy access to anywhere you want to go. They, they are for sale. That would be a wonderful site. Now, even if you didn't want to go modular, let's say we do compare apples to oranges, and you say, you know, we can actually build- let's say we do compare apples to oranges, and you say, you know, we can actually build a brick and mortar building for the same thing. That site would work, work for that if the modular wasn't comparatively cheaper or easier to go about it. Okay, Mandy, just some more pictures. These are, just some more pictures of it. That right there, I took that picture from the lot looking toward 41. So, if you look at that tree line in the background with those buildings, that little red dot, right a little bit left to center is the Kentucky Fried Chicken Building. So, that's how close you are to 41. Okay, Mandy?
That the Kentucky Fried Chicken?
That's actually the, yeah, Auto Steel Ship on the left.
Yeah, okay, Mandy. I don't eat junk food, so I might be wrong on that. There is, there's not a thing to clear. There doesn't appear to be any fill to be put in. The incredible thing about it is maybe one lot would be enough. I think it would be a little tight when you try to do the parking in a bigger building. One of the things you can't get confused on, the current police building is on incredibly .29 acres, .29. But every inch of that is being utilized. The building is right up on top of the road, that parking all around it. Each one of these lots is .74 or close to that, which is at least double. But what it does, it gives you the opportunity to do it the right way, where you have some lawn in between the road and the building, where you have plenty of parking, where you can have public parking in the front, and you can have parking for the police cars in the back, where it kind of hides the police cars, you know? No one likes the look of a bunch of police cars. It's big enough to do what you want. Okay, Mandy, just a couple more shots. If I have any more.
I think that's it.
Okay, so this is just a starting point. Okay, so what do you do with this? All right, here is a potential building site for a police station for sale for 140. Okay, we got that number. Now, let's look at what it would cost for a new building. Let's put the two numbers together. We know that we have already invested in Soul Harbor Church, that amount of money. That money could be earmarked for this project without dipping back into our coffers. We have budgeted $365,000 this year for the, what we were going to do, the retrofit, that's already was allocated. And you also have whatever the current police building itself could be worth if it was sold. Whatever that is.
I'm sorry.
Well, whatever that, whatever that is. Whatever that is. So, if you, if you add it up. So, if you add it up, if you add up what the Soul Harbor Church is worth, what we've already budgeted, and whatever the current police property is worth, you probably are pretty close to doing this without dipping into any additional money. So, this is, these are the things we're working on. I think that lot is amazing, and whether we go modular or you want to build new, I can't think of a, I can't think of hardly a better place than where it currently is.
I face it every day.
Any comment?
Yes, please.
That's an awesome site. Directions that the police could go to in response, north, southeast from that site. It's, it's terrific site. It's high, dry, level. I drive by there often, never seen water laying. So, yeah, there's going to be site prep, but it's not going to be a huge expense.
And it's still in the historic district, right?
Yeah.
Because my church is right up the street.
Right on the edge.
And it's still in the residential area, so.
There's a sign, there's a sign right there that says, I mean, it's right on the edge, right on the edge. Chief, I know you don't want to say too much. Just, could you just come up and just tell us how that particular lot and the location it is, how it would go, your access to, to where you need to go, both historic, the main roads, being able to leave and turn left, turn right on 41? When I, when we look at these pieces of property, we want to see what, you know, we don't want to put you in a situation where you're having to do a U-turn in order to go north or south.
Can I just make another comment?
Yes, please.
My church is on the corner, so I think that there just might be a problem when we have a funeral and y'all sign and go, sorry, I'm in church, okay?
Okay.
I just thought I'd make that comment.
Thank you.
It's okay for that neighborhood.
Okay, go ahead.
The site on Powell Road is an excellent site. We will be able to go to County Road 40 or to State Road 41, no matter turning left or turning right. We're about halfway in the middle. Plus, we could go to the historic district, or if we wanted to, we could go across the street, down Robertson Road and to the library or any place we need to be over there. So, it's a beautiful piece of property.
Yes, it sure is.
Faith, history, church, yeah.
I think what you're trying to say is that basically, it's the exact same location as where Ohio Street is, just a block or two over. It's in a neighborhood, it's next to a church, and it has the same complaints that this council was looking at for the Ohio Street property. Is that what you're saying? Okay, I'm just asking.
Whatever, yeah.
And, and look, I've given my market analysis to them as well, and I do want that to be known, that I did have before anybody. So, I do want you to know that I have given market analysis and was planning on listing that property. So, that is to be known.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. So, I would say we need to firm this up a little bit. So, this for sure needs to be on the next workshop and start giving direction where we want to go. Ms. Smith, what has been pointed out is some of our funds right now that would be allocated for the police project are currently tied up in property. So, we're counting on getting the money back in order to reuse it. If, we certainly would get our money back, but it might take time. As was pointed out, it might take three months, it might take six months to get the money back. Would we be able to go forward with the project with the funds that we have, knowing that when we sell these projects, those funds can be replenished?
My first answer, my immediate answer is yes. You could move forward. Timing is everything because of all the different projects that are in the works, that, for example, the Dunellen Heights Grant, we need cash flow to help us initially start that project, which would most likely come from a reserve. Once a grant, the grant is, once reimbursement requests are submitted, that money, those monies would go back into that reserve. So, again, timing is everything, but I want to say you could move forward with it. We would probably want to do a resolution stating that whatever reserve is tapped into, upon the sale of Souls Harbor Church, those monies would be redeposited into that capital reserve. So, I don't want to stop the project at all. I do, we just need, and, and things take time. You know, all the money doesn't go out the door at one time. So, I think, I think we could kind of juggle, it would be a juggling act, but I think it's achievable.
But we already, we do have $365,000 in, already in the budget.
That we do, and that is in the bank. So, you could
So, if we wanted to buy the lot right now, you could, I mean, right?
Yes.
So, the 365 is already there.
Absolutely.
All right. So, we're not, okay. Very good. So, Ms. Odom, just put this on, on the agenda for our workshop. And I, and I would ask council to, you know, sit down and, you know, really put some time into, you know, what we can do to make this happen. We have the money.
No, I'm saying how much extra money you're paying me for the work.
Well, I don't know if we have that much money. Okay, anything else we want to say about the modular building? All right. We're at number 14 now, liaison comments, council liaison reports and comments. Jan, do you have any comments on item number 14?
I have nothing at this time.
I have nothing either.
Ms. Williams?
No, not a thing.
And Vice Mayor?
I've given y'all the information from TPO last two meetings, so I think y'all have basically received everything. Yep.
Okay. I just have a couple quick ones. Like Ms. Odom says, we all do have the proposal from the modular, what it would, would cost. We also know what that site would cost. So, we have kind of a ballpark figure, once we put those two numbers together, what it would cost. You always have to consider, there could be a 10% to 15% variance. So, I always like to put a 10% or 15% on the high side, what you think it's going to cost. Want to make comment that the FDOT did come here a week or so ago and had a meeting in this room discussing moving, are you going to discuss any of this?
No, sir, you can go right ahead.
About moving the walkway that is currently connecting this side of the street to the other side with the blinking yellow lights. They have deemed that to be unsafe the way it is. They want to move it more this way with a red light, green light that stops traffic. The issue is that they are going to change the turn lanes, and that has caused some angst with the businesses over there because now, in order to get to some of the businesses the way it was proposed, you would have to do a U-turn, you'd have to go down toward the Blue Gator, do a U-turn there, and then come back to those businesses. So, the FDOT has promised that they will come back and meet with us again with some new revisions. We just got a letter from them today with some different ideas, and they promised they would meet with us again. When they do, we'll do our best to get the word out so everybody knows. I think they were quite surprised when they came to meet. They thought there might be one or two people here. And when they came in to speak, this whole room was full with a lot of Dunellen people wanting to talk to them. And they left here, and that one guy said to me, he says, wow, we don't usually experience this kind of stuff. I said, welcome to Dunellen. So, got their attention. Chief and I and others were asked to speak at a very moving 9/11 remembrance at the Evangelical Church in Blue Cove. It was something that was, I believe, recorded and would be something to re-watch. It was, I felt really privileged to be asked to speak. The sharing of a fireman, first responder, that actually was right in the thick of that, to listen to his stories and to witness the disabilities he has right now. And then to hear the stories about the people and the stories about what it would be like to be in a building when you have to make a decision whether to be burnt alive or jump, or people in a plane that you know is getting ready to crash and there's nothing you can do about it. It, it, and the gun salute with the military and the whole thing, it was done very well. And the only other thing I just have, I was asked by a resident, Troy, to ask, do we ever spray for mosquitoes anymore? In other words, walk, you know, the old Jeep with the, with the smoke thing coming out of the back?
We, we kept that out of the budget years ago, way even, even before I came back into the public works. And we looked into it about two years ago, and it's a huge expense for a guarantee of about three minutes of killing the mosquitoes. Because once the chemical disperses, for the next day, you're right back. So, yeah, we looked into it, but no, our mosquito program is for trapping and testing of the mosquitoes in case there's an outbreak of something like the equine, all the other stuff that comes up.
And I, I think in this current environment, the idea of going up and down the street with that big billow of gray smoke coming out.
So, here's, here's the other thing I found out. When I entertained the idea of doing that, we have registered bee hives in the area, and that stuff kills the bees.
Wow.
And, and the fireflies. That's why there aren't fireflies for years.
So, I hate to admit this, I remember as a kid, on my bicycle, and my buddies following those things, if you can, if you can imagine that.
Now we know.
Now you know. You know why I am.
Spray bug.
Yeah, Troy.
Yeah, sure.
I just want to, I was just sitting here thinking about Janine Delcher. There was a nice memorial service at First Baptist Church. Janine's was at Project Lift. She would be the first person that I saw when I walked in the door, and she passed of COVID. I'm telling you, it's really, really real. It was, it was a nice memorial service, but it felt so sad for her husband. He owns that mechanic shop across from the COVID department. So, I'm just asking, for those of us that, that pray, you know, that remember him in our prayers and all the others. I mean, I have a church member right now at Shannon's on a ventilator because of COVID.
I thought they've got a ventilator. Haven't they even got a ventilator?
Yeah.
Okay. Council comments are concluded. We go to item number 15. Oh, you have, oh, I thought you made your comment. Go ahead.
This thing and I, we have an ongoing battle. I even have given it a name. Yeah, going back to remembrance of 9/11, I'd just like to remind everyone, probably, I'm preaching to the choir, but after the, there was knee jerk reactions towards Muslim people after 9/11, obviously. And the current data, just read this the other day, in Manhattan, Manhattan is a really big place. Okay, at one time, I lived within an hour commute. That's where I grew up in New Jersey. As of today, last year, 2021, there are 11,000 Muslims in Manhattan and the New York boroughs that are first responders and also hospital and health workers. And let's, let's remember that we are all brothers and sisters in this nation. That's all I have to say.
That's true. That's true. And we need to be very careful, you know, when we make our little comments about other people, how they might receive. That's true.
Thank you. Those were the, that was the spirit of that presentation at the church. Kind of made, kind of made you feel that way when you got, when you had finished. All right, we go to number 15, department head comments. Ms. Smith, do you have anything else you would like to say? We got some questions for you. How about go back?
I think, I think I've all talked out.
Now that we've thought about it, we have a few questions.
Sure.
Troy, you should have a few things for us.
No, I gave you a pretty detailed report last night. My only project this week is to resolve the flooding in the lower end of Vought Springs, and I'll be working on that off and on over the next couple of days.
Anything on the volunteer program or anything?
I, yeah, I did speak with Kathy Dunn today. She has guaranteed me that it is not stopped, although there was a little bit of a break in our working together. She's working on getting some vegetation and stuff to put back here at City Hall, putting together a program where we get the high school kids to join with us. So, probably about the first week of October, we'll see them back out again. All right. And I think that's, other than that, all the projects are rolling out right now. The city beach is under construction. It starts Wednesday with minimal It starts Wednesday with minimal shutdown. We were shutting down for two days this week, three days next week, not during the busy days. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it will be open unless we have an issue. All right? Arnie Mills bathrooms are, they were worked on today, and by the end of next week, should be done with the plumbing and the flooring, and we're waiting on the divider walls to be delivered. So within a couple of weeks, both parks will have some changes.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Okay, sure.
On the flood situation, Bot Springs, have you ever thought about bringing in beavers?
No.
It is wildlife quarter. I'm just kidding.
Right, right now, the gators are looking for something to eat. There's actually a gator in the street. Got a picture of a four footer, and I was walking right beside about a foot and a half gator the other day, and I said to Matt, I said, that's either a stick floating very fast or I'm about to get eaten by a gator. So yeah.
You should see me when I go out my back door, because that lake is back there and stuff, and I'm always looking for snakes and gators.
But we've been, the, the residents down there have been very patient with us and reporting every day on their conditions and stuff, and we're trying to resolve the issue. So if I have to, we'll have to get a contractor in there to do some digging or figure it out. But I'm trying to do this without getting Swift Mud involved for permitting.
All right, we're at number 16. Andrew, I know usually when it comes to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You forgot Manny.
Oh, you'll have, yeah, Manny, of course.
Chief and I, I said, come on up.
Yeah. I asked the council that the email that Manny sent you this afternoon on the building, that one page in it that you destroyed, you should have not received that page, and that was the layout of the building. By statute, we don't give out police plans, and those plans are no good anyway. But you got the square footage, so I ask you not to share those with anyone, and please destroy them.
I need counsel to be best if you just return it to the city clerks so the city can retain them rather than destroy, if that's possible.
Do what now?
If, if they can return the documents, but it's sent in an email.
We just want to turn that.
Can you delete the email?
Yeah.
I haven't opened it yet.
I haven't opened mine either.
Just please don't share.
You have to hold on to it, and then if there's a request for it, we can assert the, assert the, the proper exemption.
If you want to resend it to me without that page, that's fine. Just, just please don't share. I won't share. I promise. As a, as a record with anyone. And if it, if anyone asks you for it, please refer them to me, and I can respond with the exemption. Gotcha. Thank you, sir. And one more thing, next Wednesday is Career Day at the high school, and they are looking for businesses to perhaps speak to the students about careers that they, you know, may be available in the area when they come out of high school. And Shane has been so kind to represent the city of Donnellan to go to the high school next Wednesday and talk to them about becoming a police officer.
Oh, okay.
That's the 22nd? Yes.
Very good.
Is Career Source involved in that? Career Source, it just leave it there?
It is Talent Center.
Yeah, that's part of Career Source.
Okay.
That's good.
Mary Terrell has reached out.
Yeah, awesome.
Ms. Odom, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Attorney hand?
Yes, sir, just one thing. At the last meeting, council asked me to take a look, I think the Chamber of Commerce had proposed a possibility of there being a website regarding tourism and some funds potentially being granted towards commerce for those endeavors. As I advised council at the meeting, and taking a look at this, the general, attorney general opinion that I was referring to, which is an old one, goes back to 1975, advises that general purpose grants to, and this is right on point with a, with a Chamber of Commerce, are prohibited under the Constitution. That there, and in this particular case, there was not a, a measure of public control to control the funds as well. And so there was an issue there. And as I advise, what, you know, really is the, the main focal point of any kind of such inquiry is, well, is there a public purpose? So looking at this particular case here, first of all, if council were to structure, if, if council is interested in some sort of a grant and so forth, if it is limited to something to do with tourism, to endeavors of a website, something along those lines, so it's very focused and council remains control, has, maintains control of those funds, these funds can only be used for that, and if they're not, you know, going to take them back, that solves one of the problems. Now, the big problem is public purpose. And what I did find in looking through some of the AGO opinions and CRAs, for instance, tourism is considered a public purpose. So absent any, you know, and I'm not finding anything else that attorney general considers that to be public purpose in that arena, I think it would be public purpose here. I do have to tell you, of course, AG opinions, as I said, are opinions of, but we, we listen, and certainly we look at them when we do research and, and we look to them for guidance. So we are seeing circumstance where it is considered to be public purpose for tourism. So what I'm telling you is that if council maintains the appropriate control over the funds and wants to move forward with that, right now, I don't see a prohibition on that so long as it's done properly with those, those measures in place.
That would be us writing the check to Mr. F., who would be the web designer. That would be us controlling the funds.
Yes, with caveat, you know, I would just add that these must be used only for this purpose. If there are any funds left over, or somehow things come in and they cost less than, than are intended, then, then they can't be used. And council would need to find a public purpose, make a finding at a meeting. But yeah, as long as those, those measures are in place, then I don't.
Manny, would you put this on the, I mean, workshop? It's good news.
That's all I have.
All right. Ms. Odom, before we wrap this up, now, are, do, do we have a date picked out again to address any of the items on the Blue Run Park ordinance?
You asked to have a special workshop on the 6th prior to your regular workshop at 3:30.
Okay.
Special workshop, 10/6, 3:30.
All right. So I, I'm hoping what our goals are as council is to get this resolved before we break for the New Year's, right?
Well, the, if you look at the schedule that I sent you, if you, I'll just kind of go over that really quick. If you, if you finalize it and council agrees on 10/6 that you're ready to move it forward to planning, it'll go to planning on October 19th, I believe it is. And then from there, if, if the planning commission recommends, you know, passes to the council, then you could have your first public hearing in November and finalize it in December, if everything goes smooth.
Timing of that would be really great if we could do it that way because it would be three or four months in front of the new season. So it would give everybody an opportunity to, to know before the new season starts what the new ordinances are. Ms. Covich?
Yeah, when are we going to continue discussion, or would this be at the same time on October 6th about Chris Anderson's request to make some kind of agreement with the city to use Blue Run Park? When is this going to be finalized, this issue?
Unless someone on council asks that it be considered. He has just simply made a presentation that we have listened to, that we don't have to respond in any way we want to.
I'd like to request because at this time, it is apparent he is involved in an illegal action based on what the county, how the county acted on the wildcat tubing business that was located at the Sunoco on 41. Was that a year and a half ago? So as of right now, his use of the Blue Run Park is an illegal activity based on the ordinances of the county.
Well, let me, let me try to clarify. Right now, the ordinance, as it is starting to shape, is, the council is taking a position that commercial activity in the, in the park, unless it's authorized through an agreement of the city and FCT, is illegal.
Right.
So right now, without an agreement with us and an agreement with FCT, what's currently going on in the park is unauthorized and shouldn't be happening.
Right.
So unless you want to consider their proposal as a possibility of opening up the door for commercial activity, you don't, you, we can just take a position, we've listened to the proposal, and we're taking no response to it. So if you put it on the agenda, that means it has to be discussed.
So, so it's the ordinance itself that we need to finalize?
That's correct.
The wording of it. I understand that. Thank you.
So you want to withdraw your request to put it on the agenda?
Just that we address that one.
That's going to be put, that's going to be put on, it's going to be put on the special, the special workshop is going to go over that thoroughly.
There you go.
Okay?
That's it.
You know, it could have been so nice if we could have put like a turn lane to go into that park, because it can be hectic sometimes.
You know. So I just want to be clear with you, Ms. Covich, you as a council member, we all have the, we all have the authority to put stuff on the agenda. Right now, do you, if you say put it on the agenda, that means we will have to discuss this contract.
Then I believe we should put it on the agenda. Yes.
You want to put it?
I want to put it on the agenda, yes. I think that.
But I don't think that's for the special workshop because the special workshop is specifically for the ordinance. That is a whole nother ball of wax. And, and you're talking, then they'll be able to come back. Is that what you want them to be able to come back and speak to you?
How about we, how about we make, take a vote right now?
We can.
Council members, to put it on the agenda?
Well, you can ask for, well.
If she wants it on the agenda, then she's getting the two confused. Are you, are you referring to the ordinance and the commercial aspect of the ordinance is what you want to revisit?
Right, yeah.
Or is it the proposed agreement?
The, the ordinance itself, because that would.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, okay.
That, that's what you'll be addressing during your special workshop.
Very good. Thank you.
So you don't want a special, yeah.
No, we don't want to add anything else. Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
I'm sorry, it, it, I thought.
Do, is there anything else council would like to?
No.
Seems like every time I try to move forward, someone puts a hand.
No, I'm sorry, I was just apologizing because when I spoke up, I thought I was wrong again. I'm sorry.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Second?
Fine.
Oh my God, we get out before dark.
My horse is down to daylight.